Calling the meeting to order at 5:31. We'll call attendance, George McGurn.
I.
Here.
Donnell Kelly. Not here. Deb Phillips.
Here.
Peter Taylor.
Here.
Steve Bannon.
Yes.
John Silbert.
Here.
Don Coburn.
You're.
Laura Rodriguez. Not here. Jane Burke.
Here.
Tara White.
Here.
Susan Smith. Not present. Sheffield, Colin Smith.
Here.
Nadine Haver.
Here.
Bonnie Silvers.
Here.
That's Patrick Waite. Not present. Sean Stephen.
I'm here.
Great. Nick Fredson. Not present. Wes Stockbridge. I know Roger couldn't make it tonight. So he's not here. Marie Ryan. I thought I saw Marie.
Yeah, she was there. She was having trouble this morning with her, with, with people hearing her.
I, I saw her on the board. All right. She's a question mark. Molly Thomas. Is here. Molly, can you hear us? Chuck Ketchum. And Lucy Prashker is here and Susan, you joined, right?
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Anybody else just came, come on? From the planning board. All right, we've got both superintendents on.
Really just joined.
Marie's back, okay. And do we have any of our union reps here tonight? I don't see them. So Jake, you want to introduce your group?
Yeah, sure. I think on the call list today are Frank Cody. I actually didn't do inventory. Rob Putnam, Ken Rock, and Matt Abrahams.
Mary's on too.
Oh, Mary. Why do I, I was on the phone for twice with Mary today. How could I forget Mary? Sorry, Mary.
All right, so we'll move to the approval of the April 26 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
I will move to approve.
Second. That was Chuck.
Or Steve, both of us.
We'll do Chuck. All right, any discussion of the minutes?
The only thing I found was that in the attendees. Peter is not identified as superintendent.
Are you still a superintendent, Peter Dillon?
I think so.
We'll give you that title back.
And true commendations to the person, Mary, who did this.
Yeah, Mary has just been doing a yeoman's job on these. I did ask her to. Be as detailed as she could be on the facilitated discussions because we don't have written presentations the way we do in most of our meetings. So she's done a terrific job with that and really appreciate that work, Mary. Thank you. I'm gonna call for a vote on the minutes. Charlie?
Approve.
George?
Yes.
Tom Burkle?
Yes.
Deb Phillips?
Yes.
Peter Taylor?
Yes.
Steve Bannon?
Yes.
John Silbert?
Yes.
Don Coburn?
Yes.
Jane Burke?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan Smith?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Marie?
Yeah.
Molly? Is Molly a yes? Did we lose Molly? And Lucy's a yes. I forgot to mention Patrick Waite's got a, what he described as a baby annual meeting tonight. Baby town meeting. Not sure what those are, but that's why he's not here tonight. Okay, so the, the minutes were approved. Jane, you've got your hand up.
Uh, yeah, I had a question. Um, I'm concerned that we don't have union representation. And I have a question whether when they signed on to be representatives, was there any stipulation about expectations of their attendance at meetings?
Yeah, the, the expectation was that they would attend the facilitated discussions with the federal facilitators. There was no requirement that they continue to attend beyond that, but they were certainly invited to continue to attend.
Well, I just want to register my concern that we got the facilitation because they were going to be active members. And I would like the board to encourage them to come back. They've got some stipends that are fairly generous. And I think we need them here. So I, I don't know whether it's too late to reach out to them or how we would do that, or maybe I'm the only one that thinks they're needed. I just wanted to bring it up.
Well, I did invite them at the end of last, the last meeting to continue to attend our meetings. But their commitment was to attend the facilitated discussions, which they did. George McGurn.
Thank you, Lucy. I, I'm glad Jane brought this issue up, actually. I think that the presence of, of the unions was, was very helpful in all of those facilitation sessions. And which I think overall were, were very positive. And, and I, I think the entire planning board should recognize that and actually thank the two facilitators. So although they obviously knew how to, how to pass the torch at what, what right time and things. We, we saw some real professionals work there and I thought that was very impressive. But I'm, I'm glad Lucy that you clarified that the union does have an open sort of invitation. Because I, I didn't know that before and I think that's very important.
Yeah, and I'm happy to send a follow-up email to them expressing the board's hope that they will continue to participate. And you know, invite them to continue to attend.
Yeah, you know, there, there are really interesting example of something in the minutes we just adopted this evening that Peter Dillon said about, but what are we going to do about people that come into this process late? When so much is going on, you know, they're, they're going to have a lot to tell their members and a lot to think about. And to figure things out, I, I think our transparency was, was admirable. And I'm, I'm sorry it takes so much time to talk about this, but I, I, I think overall that was a great success. We ought to recognize it as such. Thank you.
Thanks, George. And with the permission of the group, I will again extend to the facilitators our thanks and appreciation for the, the excellent work that they did.
Absolutely.
All right, project manager update, Jake.
Great, thanks. Let me get this loaded here. All right, thanks. Good to see everyone again. I just have a few things I'm gonna run through with you all today related to the project management updates. And then I know we're going to be talking about next steps in a timeline. I do want to just quickly mention that I also did follow up with all the union reps and I thank them. And we had their pay process and I got some nice feedback from a couple of them. Appreciative of being involved in the process. So just wanted to let you all know that too. So one of the things I just want to mention is that we continue to do advocacy on, on behalf of the group. And I've had some connections with the delegation, the Department of Education and with ongoing with potential funding streams. We know that, what I'm going to be talking about in a minute related to the budget is going to be important to supporting work forward. And so I think really working with the delegation and the department to think about ways in which we can fund the work to support your research efforts is going to be important. So we know that the regionalization monies, those monies which are greatly funding the work that has occurred over the last 10 months was not included in the fiscal year 23 budget on the House side or the governor's side. But based on a conversation with Senator Heinz, we're somewhat optimistic that it could be returned through the Senate before the budget is certified and on July 1. So we will continue to support our work with the Senator and the delegation. Because, you know, we believe that that funding stream is critically important, not just to this regional school district planning board, but other communities across the state that are thinking about collaborative shared services and regionalization options. And if the state has real interest in supporting this, then it's going to be important that they have a consistent funding stream. On the Burke 12 side, we're doing a lot of work to support funding, which we know we've had a partnership with the South County Regional School District Planning Board to support research work. And so as we are working on securing funding for FY23 through the Bar Foundation, the state through an earmark, we just recently received a large urban innovations grant, which is going to support districts across the county. We're hoping that funding that comes into Burke will continue to be invested, but to some degree in work that's happening in South County or in other parts of the county is folks are interested in doing collaborative and regionalization work. So I wanted to mention, as was on the agenda, that the frequently asked questions section of the website is live. I, I believe I sent you all an email or maybe more than one since our last meeting. And so you'll see if you go to the front page, there's a little button that will direct you to the frequently asked questions or on the resources page. When you get there, you'll see a bunch of topics. And if you click on the topics on a little plus sign here, it opens like an accordion and the questions will emerge. So I would encourage, as I've been doing, and I have received some emails from a couple of you, so I appreciate that. Any questions that you all have or that individuals that you're interacting with in your communities have, please continue to send them along. They have questions we've answered and certainly encourage them to check out the website. And folks can email me directly too. We'll be adding to these as we answer questions and then I think in some cases, making decisions where we nest additional questions on these various pages that we've constructed so far. So I don't know if there's any questions, Lucy, related to the frequently asked questions section?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay, if you just let me recognize folks with hands up. So Jane has her hand up, yes.
So Jake, you're saying, like I said, questions, should I be going to the website for answers? Are, are my questions posted there with answers or how are my questions being dealt with?
Your questions are being dealt with. So I, I will promise that any member who sends me questions will get a direct reply from me at some point with answers to your questions, to the degree that we can answer the questions you're asking. And then in addition to that, Jane, I think where we see fits on the FAQ pages, we'll add those in. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but they won't ultimately be shared with the full board. They're, they're more on a private basis, it sounds.
Um, yeah, I don't have any aversion to sharing anything that we reply to anyone with, with everybody. But I guess I would sort of cycle that through the chair in terms of her best thinking on how we distribute answers to folks.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the way it should work, so it's not too inadvertently impinge our obligations or impinge the requirements of the open meeting law is that Jake will respond to your questions directly and at meetings. To the extent after you get those responses, you'd like to have the questions stated and responded to at the general meeting. You should ask for that. I, I think we should all ask for that. But I think it makes sense to first send them to Jake, get his response. And then if there are questions that you think require for full discussion by the full board, we should definitely be doing that at board meetings.
Sounds good.
George McGurn.
Thank you, Lucy. I, I think Jane's question was different than the answer you provided. In the sense that she thought the public should know about the interactions between Jake and an individual member of the planning board. Because perhaps that could spark the community involvement that Jane has so persistently said she thinks is necessary is kind of heartbeat of this process. I, I use the term heartbeat. That's better driving force than enrollment numbers, it seems to me. But anyway, that's the question Jane is asking. And just to have these conversations between the planning board is not reaching out to our communities.
Okay, well, would I have seen of questions that have come in so far from not just planning board members, but all members of the community by and large are addressed in the frequently asked questions? To the extent Jake has answered those questions, I think some questions came in. Some commentary, I'm not sure it's all properly described as questions. But some communications that have come in recently, I don't think Jake has yet responded to in full. But again, I encourage all planning board members to bring all questions and comments that you think the full planning board and the public should hear to our planning board meetings. And I think Jane has done that quite well. I think she's articulated her position and raised questions. And I think we've had a pretty fulsome discussion. But we should continue to. And I encourage people to continue to raise the questions that they have.
Yeah, Lucy, just very briefly, I, I agree with that. But I also want to say that I think Jake's effort to produce these FAQs. I mean, it's really complicated. It's, you know, it's dangerous territory, but it is really good job. And so I'm, I'm certainly not objecting to anything about that. I don't know anyone who is. It's just so much for us to think about.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, we really do appreciate the questions. I mean, Tom sent me, if he doesn't mind me sharing, he sent me a set as he promised he would a few days ago that we're working through. There's some data he asked about state level information that we've got to do some work on to try to get at. So that's going to, you know, it won't take forever, but it's going to take us, you know, getting under the hood a bit. But the intention is both, Jane, I know you've sent me some, some, some questions and, and Tom and some others that we, we do reply to everyone's questions and where we think it's appropriate to put into the FAQ. I mean, FAQ is, is often, FF is really an important driver, right? So things that people are asking quite often, frequently, there, there are questions that I think may be internal to the board and to be discussed with the board and what we decide and put on the website, maybe something that we could, we could certainly deliberate on.
Okay. Jake, keep going.
Keep going. All right, so on to budget. I want to, since we're about six weeks or so away from our our significant funding stream closing, which is the fiscal code 191 regionalization money that we secured for fiscal year 22. I wanted to just walk through everyone, what we had left. And then in addition to that, what we have available through town and district funds that are still unspent. So we, the grant that we secured this past round was for $130,000. Rather than go line by line as I've done in, in previous meetings with, with you all on how we had invested and you had approved that the $130,000 would be spent. This particular snapshot looks at what we have not spent by category and what we have not encumbered to spend between now and the end of June. So in effect, what I think we're going to have left over that really needs to be allocated towards something. So if you look down the lines, you'll see that the money you've invested in me will be zeroed out. We're a little bit over budget on admin. We didn't spend all our money in the research team. So we are around 25, $24,000 there. We didn't spend it all on community outreach facilitation. Legal is not quite 15,000. We, we did get a recent invoice, although it wasn't really for anything significant. And then we have travel and supply. So all totaled, we have around $42,000 that has yet to be spent within fiscal code 191 fiscal year 22 by June 30. In addition to that, you have town and district funds, which we checked, I checked last week with Sharon Harrison. Because Berkshire Hills is managing that side. Well, Southern Berkshire manages the Fund Code 191 grant. There's 51,000, little bit under $52,000 in that. So you have a total available around $93,000. Half of which, a little less than half of which, it's got to be spent by June 30. And the balance, which can be spent, I think is not really time constrained. Any questions on this slide? Okay, so that said, you know, I was asked to put together potential ways in which you could spend the money in the coming months. And so this is the current snapshot. This is really not up to me to decide. I make a, a proposal and a pitch and, and then you as a board gotta make a decision how you want the money spent. So I did get it down to spending every dollar you have available, both on the Fund Code, on 191 grant and the town funds. So basically, a payment for the project management manager, me or whoever you hire. A facilitator for a convening, which I'm going to talk about a little bit later in the session today. But we've talked about as a board, which is bringing the community together in a couple of virtual convenings, which we like to do. Paying for ongoing support of our research team, folks who are on the call today. And again, the projection for both me, the research team and the admin support is for three months. And so it's about 100 hours for my research team, which is eight hours per week. And for me, it's 150 hours, which is around 13 hours a week. I think I'm right now, I'm being paid for 14 hours a week. It's about the same.
So Jake, just clarification, when you say three months.
Yeah.
We've, we've provided for payment through June 30, right? So are you talking about July, August, September work?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, so it's July, August, September. If you were to choose to hit go on July 1.
Got it.
Yeah. And if you suspended spending for some period of time, you could stretch that out. But you still need, you still have the problem of needing to spend Fund Code 191 down. So then in addition to that, I'm going to jump over consultants and go right to legal. We've estimated legal at around $7,000 net support work on drafting of a regional agreement. And then I put in a small amount to manage and maintain the website. So basically, all I did after that was back out, what do we have left? It's around $40,000. And that's what you could use to hire specific consultants within different topic areas, finance, public relations, regionalization support, ed visioning, transportation, special education. So clearly, not enough money to do all that if you decide to spend in this particular pattern. But certainly some money that could be allocated towards getting some support in those areas. I can stop there and see if folks have questions.
So my question is, out of this 93.5, where is the 44 or 45 that would need to be spent and or encumbered by June 30, which is
Yeah.
seven weeks away.
I'd say it's in a couple of places. It's an excellent question, obviously. This is where we get into a situation in which we advance contract with people. And so we contract potentially with a consultant or you contract with me or members of the research team. And you're in effect paying for the time with the contract that the work will be, occur over that time period, the three months. So I'd say that you could tackle this a couple of different ways. The research team, well, for sure, you know, assuming that you approve the facilitator with convening, that's $6,000. You add in the 15 and the 22.5, you're pretty much at your FC 191 spending level. You're probably a little bit beyond it.
Okay, so hiring the facilitator committing to you and the research team for July, August, September would zero out that state grant, which has to be zeroed out by June 30?
Right.
Okay.
In effect, what it, what it buys you is hours, right? So it's, you know, we've been doing this with the entire team. The reason that we had money left over in the research team's budget is because you contracted with people and they didn't use all the hours. So we return those hours back into the pool of funds available and then reallocate this way.
Okay. I've got George, your hand is up. Don's hand up is up and Jane. So let's start with George, then we'll go to Don, then we'll go to Jane.
Thank you, Lucy. I, I take it, Jake, this is a very straightforward and transparent elegant exit of the team, assuming nothing else changes, you know, in this very volatile budgetary situation we're at. But it's, it's, it's just a contingency plan. I mean, it, what, what you're proposing makes a lot of sense to me. But I, I just want to ask this broader question.
So you, you're asking, George, if there's a plan beyond September 30th in effect? Assuming that we would spend in these three months as we
Yes, I mean, you know, assuming that, you know, at, at the moment, as I understand it, the kind of funding sources that we depended upon are not currently available.
Well, not as it stands.
As it stands, but we know, you know, what does that mean? But, you know, it's, it's, it's beacon hill, beacon hill. So Uh, but you know, it's, it's uh, it's Beacon Hill, Beacon Hill. So
Yeah, no, it's good, it's a good question. I mean, I think if the state is really
This is, this is a very good thing to, you know, explain to people about the resources we have. You know, I've always thought that our, the commitment of ten thousand dollars for each town, no matter what size the town was, et cetera, was, was quite a generous contribution and, and one that, that we made recognizing the importance of this uh, planning board. And I've never had any hesitancy, hesitancy about spending be- because, you know, the questions that we're asking are really important. And so if nothing else happens, I, I, I think it's good to have a plan. So thanks.
It was eight per town, George.
Pardon me?
It was eight per town, eight thousand per town.
Oh, okay. I thought it was ten, but you know. What can I say? I don't even do our household finances.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Jake, anything more on that before I go to Don?
No.
Okay, Don?
So I'd like to turn to the facilitator for convening.
Mm-hmm.
I uh, do I gather correctly that that would be a convening of meetings for citizens in the towns to ask questions and make comments?
That's correct. Yeah, so I, we discussed.
So, sorry. Okay, so if that, if that is the case, my question is, is this, what, the facilita- facilitators were very useful in dealing with a group that had to come to decisions and to help us to um, control ourselves and, and, and converse in a, in a positive way and to make sure everybody's heard. This, these meetings are, are not like that. These are simply meetings for people to uh, make their comments, ask their questions and have them answered. So um, Lucy, please don't get mad at me, but my question is, why should that not be handled by our chair, who is so familiar with all the details of the issues that the facilitators will not be uh, familiar with, or if not alone, perhaps with the assistance of or by the person who is chair of the Community Outreach Committee? So I'd like to see that six thousand go for other stuff like consultants, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay. So I, I'd like to respond to that. I, I think the idea for this facilitator would be to bring in someone who has a lot of experience with facilitating large community groups. And certainly um, Jake and maybe I uh, would be available to respond to factual questions that are raised uh, during these convenings. But I think it's a special skill, Don, that I don't pretend to have to facilitate large community groups in a way that's productive and is not just sort of an airing of people's already formed opinions, but provide space for dialogue and maybe exchange of information and maybe changing of some minds. And so I think it's a very particular skill. We've identified someone who has that particular skill. I'm not that person. Um, and I think it would be money very well spent. That's my own personal view. Jake, do you want to speak a little bit about who we're the kind of person, what we've been talking to and what, what he or she has done in the past?
Sure. Yeah, and actually, um, I, I, I don't mean to put Peter Taylor on the spot.
Get rid of the screen, please, Jake.
Sure. Yeah, I can happily do that. I was wondering, yeah. All right, how's that better?
Thank goodness, huh? Yes, thank you.
So um, uh, Peter Taylor, actually, I think, Peter, you originally raised this in one of our community outreach and uh, engagement subcommittees. Um, because uh, Peter participated in uh, a number of virtual convenings that we held uh, in concert with the Bar Foundation related to our portrait of a graduate work. And in those virtual convenings, I think in one meeting, we were close to a hundred and forty people. Um, in uh, really a, a carefully facilitated and managed um, sharing session. So it's, you know, uh, the person we used was Ben Klopas. He's a well-known regional educator. And um, he was able to use sort of contemporary uh, tech tools to put people into breakout sessions, to collect feedback from people using a number of online tools. Um, and the sessions, I think, were really well received. We got a lot of great information out of them. And it was Peter who actually raised this as a possibility of um, using this as a, as a, as a mechanism to um, do some community outreach um, in the next phase.
And Jake, I, I would just, you know, echo what Lucy said and what you described. Um, and Don, I, I, I hear you in terms of being um, budget conscious, but I, I, I think you do get what you pay for in terms of designing uh, community engagement sessions that actually are generative in nature, meaning that they are not just back and forth with questions and answers, but people really thinking about, you know, what can be different and how, as we think about different, you know, the, the preferred model and, and uh, the opportunities it could present. So I, I, and especially if you overlay a virtual format, which requires uh, you know, different tools to provide really a level playing field for everyone to contribute. It's, it's a specialized skill set, and I think six thousand bucks is a bargain.
I withdraw everything I said. May I just withdraw everything I said? Please.
Of course, Don. Peter Taylor, very, very effective. You got, you got the judge to withdraw what he said. I've never, I've never seen that happen before.
No, I think it was because I was just repeating everything that already been said. He didn't want to hear it anymore.
Okay.
All right, uh, Jane?
Uh, I have a couple of questions. One is I guess it's been determined that you can give advanced contracts and uh, it's considered spent by uh, the end of June. So I, I see Jake's head bobbing, but does that mean yes or maybe or uh, what?
I'd say we have done it. That's probably the best answer I can.
Okay, so it's an iffy situation. I just wanted to clarify that. So we had some, we have some interesting areas that we want to explore. My concern about the budget, which is, which isn't up there anymore, is that some of the money that is allocated possibly for the research team for certain of these items, I would think maybe we would want to take some of that out and give it to a new um, person. For instance, transportation is a big issue. It may be very expensive to work through. I think Jake's been transparent that his team is not a special, specializing in that. And we may need outside help on that. So I would like to look carefully at where the expertise is um, with the research team and what we have lacked because the research team can't know everything. And that's fair enough. Um, so that's just my one concern, because I think those items that are listed are all very important, and I would want to be maybe putting price amounts of how much we would want to put in each of those buckets.
Jake, do you want to speak to the, the transportation uh, research legwork you've done and what you're sort of scoping out for that?
Yeah, I, I've spent the last two weeks talking to as many people as I can talk to, to get referrals around uh, potential um, areas of expertise that you all have um, signaled that there's interest in, in, you know, um, having additional study on. And I'm not going to suggest that I've I've gotten everyone down, um, that is a, a possible um, consultant um, to, to the board. Um, but I have talked to a couple of folks um, in the area of transportation, special education, ed visioning. Obviously, I've talked to Mars about regionalization. They, they clearly have a skill set, an understanding of regionalization, regional agreements. Um, um, so yeah, I mean, I can, I, I spoke specifically with Rich Labrie as one example. I, I know that Rich is working with with you all in Southern Berkshire on a transportation study. He's considered a, a pretty highly knowledgeable transportation um, individual and in the Commonwealth. So that, you know, just as an example.
So I, I, we don't have the budget up, but I thought you had a separate line item for the transportation in that.
I'll bring it back up.
Yeah.
So, yeah, what we have right now, Lucy, is we have around forty thousand dollars between all this consulting work.
Mm-hmm.
So it's that, that transportation money is embedded within that.
Okay.
Just to clarify, so that's not in the research team, right?
No.
Okay.
The forty thousand is outside the research team.
Team is, is literally paying um, you know, three of our individuals. Um, it's Ken, Rob and Mary, um, basically for eight hours a week for three months at their rate. So it's about a hundred hours total. You have existing contracts with Mary. Um, she'll probably exhaust that. I'm, I'm confident she'll exhaust that by the end of this time period. Um, uh, Rob has a few hours left, um, which could potentially carry over. Ken is about done. Um, so this would basically keep the research team on, and my vision for the research team was to be, really have them working pretty closely in some of the task areas that I'll be laying out in a few minutes. Now, that doesn't preclude the need to go into some of the other areas and get technical expertise um, in areas like transportation, special education, talking with someone tomorrow morning about special education. Uh, and what it would cost to do, you know, a deeper dive into that particular area. Um, I have a a rough estimate from Mars, what they'll charge to um, help us work on regionalization. I've got some ballpark on educational visioning, but really it depends on sort of how deep we go on that. So um, yeah.
Okay, we'll go to Bonnie and then Jake. I'm going to let you continue with your presentation.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you. I think I, I just, what gives you, given our previous discussions, the confidence um, that we will be allowed to encumber this money by signing contracts, but not spending uh, until July through September?
Well, we, we have two options. We can do that. I guess the confidence is, we've done that. I've done that about the task for side and and uh, on the regionals, uh, on, on your side. Now, the question is sort of how far out can you carry that, Bonnie? I think there's a reasonableness to it. Um, in grants, in terms of how um, long you have to expend it out. Um, which is why I didn't carry the money out for six months. I, I think really three months is probably the furthest I would stretch something like this. There is another option. The other option is to ask for an extension, which the Department of Ed can't grant, grant us. We really have to do through our delegation through the legislature. So they would have to grant the extension.
Is it really? Do both?
Excuse me?
Is it possible to do both? Proceed the way you're suggesting
Mm-hmm.
planning for, you know, the next, for three months
Yeah.
July, August, September, and at the same time, request the extension. So we have one in our back pocket.
Yeah, and, and I mean, we, we certainly can go through the route of asking for the extension. I mean, we did raise that with um, Rep Pignetalian, Senator Hines, is a possibility.
And what was the response?
I think the response was it's, it's an option. You know, it's one of those
I think it was more like it's a possible option.
Possible. I mean, there's a lot of money that's flowing around the State House right now in terms of federal money coming in and the new budget. So I, I don't you know, in, in some cases, I think, um, I mean, Peter and Beth have experience with this. I, I don't want to really stray from the procurement rules, which is, you're right, Bonnie. We should be signing contracts that are expired the last day of the of, of the grant. Um, but I think there's been some flexibility on the Department of Ed's side on um, these sorts of projects, particularly when they're giving us the money really late in a cycle, and you don't even have a full year to spend it. Um, they, they, I think they even understand to some degree the uh, the handcuffs that, that puts on planning boards like yours.
So Jake, you're being logical. Um, and I just don't want the people, you know, that were in asking to encumber time for work to be paid, to be heard, and I don't want us to, you know, misjudge. So I'll say that you'll figure it out. Um, the other is, and I think Don backing off on that maybe, uh, the facilitator, I'm so glad you're going to someone outside. When you're talking about, are you talking about the person would also prep all of us, design the necessary materials, design the sessions, and it would be more than one session?
Two sessions is what I planned on, two virtual session.
And with all the prep that goes with it and follow-up?
With the prep that goes with it, and I've got some follow-up built in too. So
Think you have enough money there.
I'm pretty sure. I don't have a proposal on hand yet, but I did talk with Ben um, earlier this week. And then I've also talked with Mary because, you know, you, you need a second person who is also um, to some degree, the person behind the curtain, who's managing things like breakout spaces and it's, it's, you know, when you have a hundred plus people online, it's, it's got to be really um, highly um, you know, um, organized.
All right. I don't want to go into too much detail, but are you discussing it all, doing a combination of in-person as well as virtual?
This was, the proposal I asked for was all virtual.
Honey, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about this at more length at our Community Outreach Subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, and so Peter Dillon, you had your hand up. Do you, but now it's down. Do you still?
I, I, I took it down. I was just going to say that e- e- extensions are very hard to get these days, so I wouldn't bet on, on getting uh, an extension. Uh, there, as Jake said, there's lots of money around right now and, and, and folks don't want to approve extensions because then they're, they report to feds or if it's state money and it creates a whole domino effect. So I, I think the likelihood of us getting an extension is very low.
Thanks for the added insight.
Thanks. All right, Jake, why don't you keep going?
Sure. So we're going to shift to the next part of the agenda, which is the next steps. Is that okay, Lucy here?
Yeah.
All right, so um, um, as you all know from reading the final analysis report, I did a series of next steps that I proposed in a very broad form um, in that document, and I've alluded to in some of the other documents also. Um, but I decided to organize the work into what I perceive as a series of tasks that um, the board should be taking up. Um, we um, previewed this um, was it earlier? It was last week. I'm, I'm losing my sense of time here, with the project management team. And I got some great, we got some great feedback from them and sort of how we um, frame these. And so I've made a few adjustments, but um, I basically have organized the work into sort of five significant task areas, which are described on the screen here. Community outreach and engagement, uh, educational visioning, work on a draft regional agreement, um, additional analysis in some of the areas that were just raised, things like transportation, special education, and then really a focus on ongoing advocacy. And that's obviously to continue to get attention placed on the work you're all doing, funding to support the work you're all doing, and then potential um, or, you know, regulatory considerations in some of the areas that we know, um, we're going to need some support on. So these are the five task areas that I've laid out, and I like to talk about each of those um, just briefly. Um, but my vision, my thought for this is that it's um, really going to be a, the way I'm describing is the pretty compressed timeline. It's it's a pretty hardcore press, um, in that there would be regular meeting structures, whether that's subcommittee or an advisory group. Um, there might be some formats in which you want to do a retreat half-day format, where you're bringing people together to sort of dig into issues, um, potential. Uh, potential for that would be in the area of ed visioning. Um, you would have reports and findings and recommendations that would flow through the subcommittees and ultimately to the You would have reports and findings and recommendations that would flow through the subcommittees and ultimately to the full board. This process, in my opinion, would bring additional voices and stakeholders to the table to provide input. And I think that in addition to doing straight up community outreach and convenings, getting people involved in things like Ed visioning is an engagement activity. And then what I'm suggesting is each task area would have someone from our research team attached as a liaison. And then we'd have consultants that would support, you know, specific targeted technical assistance as needed. And ultimately, that would, these would all feed into this final regional agreement and Ed plan that would come back to the full board for review on ultimately editing and approval. So these are the work areas, and I can sort of walk you through each of them. So the first is community outreach and engagement. And so imagining that this is kind of as a two-pronged approach. One is ensuring that we're getting really good information out about what the board is working on, what it's done to date, where it's headed. That's everything from press releases, working on right now, keeping the website up, which is, I think you have an exceptional website. It's, and we continue to get compliments on it, maybe doing additional video work. So that's sort of the pushing out of material, but also how do you get information from your community and hear from your community? And that's where we're talking about doing community convenings and then potentially a different, additional sets of surveys and focus groups as we head into the fall. So I had sort of three major areas under the timeline. We'd have ongoing work around the press releases. We'd have targeted work related to surveys and focus groups. Then we'd have event work, which would be things like convenings, which I'm proposing for late June. And then your resources are explained on the right-hand column. This work can be organized through the community outreach subcommittee, and the deliverable would be evidence of outreach. Obviously summarized data and themes that comes out of these convenings and gatherings that would all be shared with a full board. So that's our first task area. Let me keep going, Lucy?
Yep.
Second task area is Ed visioning. And Ed visioning is a big part of the work. I, I think it's really foundational and probably is the most important thing that you're all working on. And so I'm proposing that Ed visioning be tackled with, I, I guess a three-pronged approach. One is a focus on developing really a programmatic educational plan for grades nine through twelve, which in effect is you know, feeds into the, this construction of the new high school renovations in the high school. The second would be a group that would be focused on career vocational technical ed. As you know, in the CBTE report, I talked a lot about what would be needed to thin down the universe of options. I think we pitched eleven programs that were potential. We know we can't support eleven programs. So it's how do you engage in a conversation about what programs make the most sense? And then an understanding of what would be needed to get those programs set up, approved, reviewed, equipped on all the things that come with that. Then the third group would be working on the remaining grades K through eight. And given the fact that in Model A two, we keep the middle schools and the elementary schools as they are, the work would really be more around the sort of the, the sense of moving towards alignment over time. So it'd be more asset mapping, like what are the schools doing right now? How are they approaching curriculum? What curriculum are they using? What's the teaching and learning system? So it would really be an opportunity for K educators to begin to work together around, you know, sharing and learning more about what's happening across the eight towns and the various schools. So, you know, the timeline on this is again, you'd have really three sort of advisory groups is what we're calling them. One working on grades nine through twelve, one on CBTE and one on K eight. And I could see this happening, particularly on the ninth or twelve, and, you know, a retreat format where you're literally you know, bringing in an educational planner to really walk through, you know, a very large group of, of people who represent stakeholders from across the community, you know, teachers, faculty, staff, students, parents, community members, and really, you know, working through this, the design of the educational plan for the grades nine through twelve. For CBTE, my sense would be that you would, you know, leverage the current advisory that exists in vocational education and then build that out based on potential new programs. And so those have got to include potential partners in the community, in the workforce. They're helping really to inform that. And then K alignment would really be involving the educators who are, you know, on the ground floor in that work. All that would be, you know, sort of shaped under the education subcommittee. And the deliverable, deliverable would really be an educational vision and program plan that really talks about what this new district and high school, you know, how they'll approach, you know, courses, structures and teaching and learning. I wanted to just take a second and just do a quick, just timeout and because people often, I, I've shared with you this intersection between the mass school building authority process for Ed planning and the regionalization process for Ed planning. So in the formation of a new region, there is a requirement you're working on developing a long-range educational plan. It's right in the regulation. So that will happen at some point. And I'm suggesting it happens in this particular visioning work. The MSBA also has educational program requirements when new facilities are constructed or renovated. And I guess the way that I would describe it is that if you think of regionalization as a process, the MSBA is a process for Ed planning. Yet visioning really straddles these two processes and meeting the requirements of both bodies of work. So I, I know this doesn't lay out every single detail. Yeah, I took some snapshots from the various guidance documents that talk about kinds of things that end up being in these educational program plans, everything from academics to co-curriculars to teacher planning to methodologies, to school scheduling. And that's all stuff that would be born out of the Ed visioning work. The third task group would be the regional agreement advisory group. And really the charge of this group would be to begin to shape out a draft regional agreement that includes all the required elements for regional agreement as they currently exist in the two districts. And I put obviously an example of a couple of elements, you know, two of the really important ones, obviously, not that any or more or less important than others, but are, would be governance. And obviously how funds travel in terms of assessment back to towns. So this working group would, would, would be meeting a couple of times a month, would be supported with technical expertise, both on the legal side and on the regionalization side. That would likely involve, you know, I think right now our council is Russell Dupre. And obviously Mars, Mass Association of Regional Schools has quite a bit of expertise in regionalization and could provide some technical coaching in that area. So this particular body of work would be organized through the chair, Lucy, and would involve bringing additional town reps to the table. And I could see finance subcommittee is also serving an important role in reviewing things like assessment methodologies and calculations and that sort of stuff. So the deliverable obviously would be a draft regional agreement that's brought to the full board. And the Department of Education and Mars both recommend that that pieces get brought to the board as their sort of work through. But ultimately, the whole thing gets brought to the board and, you know, gets reviewed and ultimately voted on. The fourth task area is additional operational analysis. This is pretty self-explanatory. This would just be making a decision on additional areas that need to be leaned into, such as those which were described, things like transportation, special education, you know, facilities, food service. And so I could see this again running through the operations subcommittee and would probably involve, you know, the, the hiring of very specialized consultants that would look into, you know, doing a deeper dive than we did in the first round. And then delivering those reports back through the subcommittee to the full board. And then the last working group is really just, I think has been ongoing since day one. I think it goes really without saying, it's just ongoing advocacy. You know, keeping really strong relationships with the Department of Ed, but with, obviously through Berkshire Hills to the MSBA and the local delegation support for this work and just making sure that folks are aware of what we're doing and that we continue to sort of advocate for support and any regulatory relief or incentives that we can muster as part of this process. So those are the five task areas. And then I've put together a very, very ambitious timeline. And so I'm suggesting, obviously, I just described funding that takes us through September. So the goal is to try to, you know, be as efficient and as we can in the work, but really working through a series of those task areas and deliverables that would ultimately culminate in having a set of additional reports and data that the board can consider in November, delivery on in December. Again, really the thing that ultimately gets voted on is the regional agreement, I would say in addition to the educational program plan, your vision for what education looks like in December. And that creates, that builds in a little bit of wiggle space. If you go beyond that into January or February, so you potentially could position this work for referral to the towns in the spring town meeting timeline, if it is, if you chose to approach it that way. It certainly, I think you all know that you can also refer to the towns for special town meetings. This particular timeline, I just lined it up with the spring town meetings as one option. Okay. I have additional detail that, you know, I've been sketching out on a, a more of a month-by-month basis, but some of this work will also have to be worked out within each of the task areas. And then, as I mentioned, you know, there's a lot of areas where we're gonna need additional consulting help. I think I've described them already. I think there are areas, I just want to be crystal clear, like we have a high degree of expertise on our team and career vocational technical education. I think we have excellent finance support through the Abrahams Group. I think we got a lot of educational experience on our team. It could support Ed visioning, although I think there would be some value to bringing in potentially an Ed planner to help us work through some of that. But there will be areas like the transportation, special ed, where we will want to bring in additional expertise. So I can stop there, Lucy, and
What's an Ed planner for those of us who haven't been through this process before? What, who?
Yeah.
What is, what is a planner? And what do they do?
That's a great question. Yeah, so there's actually a certified educational facilities planner which are often used in concert with the mass school building authority when districts are going through a significant construction or renovation process. The Ed planner really looks at everything from, you know, really works with a community to think about, how do you want to deliver education? What are your priorities? What are your, what are your core values? What are your philosophy? How do you want to organize students and grades and learning? And really translates that into, you know, a, a draft plan that then reflects the educational aspirations of the community to the architects, the designers, so that they're able to then use the educational plan to craft the spaces that become, you know, part of the, the new facility. And, you know, again, Berkshire Hills has, has done this, some of this work because they've been through feasibility once already. So there's some foundational work that they did back in twenty fifteen. But as I've said from the very beginning, since I've been talking about this idea of you know, becoming an eight-town school district, this to me is a really important set of exercises. Because this is where you all come together as an eight-town to talk about what you want your school district to look like. This is what is gonna get people engaged. This is, I think, what's gonna get people excited. So I think it's a really important part of the process. So the Ed planner, to your question, Lucy, would, would help to facilitate that work.
So before I open up the floor for discussion, I just want to give the superintendents an opportunity to weigh in on on any or all of this, but in particular, I think the group would really benefit from your views on the educational visioning, those three buckets. And, and how you see that working with your educational leadership, your faculty, how that's all gonna mesh together or might mesh together. Beth or Peter? Or both, hopefully?
Peter, it's okay. I'll go first because I think you probably have to think about it differently with with your building project, but with the building project. But I think I've said from the beginning, I think we should have started with educational visioning, actually. So at this point, I think it is critically important. I'm just not sure. I think it's gonna, it's gonna be a challenge from where we are now, but I think, I think that is going to be an important piece and making sure that people understand what the critical initiatives or, or goals are for our communities and what, what it means to have a successful K-12 experience, whatever that might be. And I think there's gonna be a lot of different potential outcomes. So I think you, you can't wait any longer to do the visioning work.
So Beth, if I could just follow up, Jake had identified three buckets for this educational visioning. Ed visioning around the new high school, Ed visioning around CBTE, and then visioning K through eight in terms of alignment. Do those buckets make sense to you?
It, I mean, I guess I kind of have a question when you say around the new high school because to me, potentially that vision's already created for the most part, so I'm not sure. I think there could be some additional things fleshed out, but I, I'd also even like to consider, I mean, I'm still back. I, I'm not a hundred percent sold on, on the, the proposal as it is. But I, I think I, I CBTE on its own, I, I don't know. I think it's part of the already part of the, the high school nine through twelve program as is. So I'm, I'm not sure why we need two groups, but and then the K through eight, I think that's a big chunk again. But I, I think elementary and again, we spent a lot of time just on middle school alone. So maybe it would be better to do elementary, middle, high. That would be something I'd think about.
Okay.
Peter?
Yeah, I, I like the buckets as, as they are, though I'm not opposed to doing elementary, middle, high. Obviously, we've done some real foundational work around what we hoped a three-town high school would be, but we've not done much work around what an eight-town high school would be. So I think there's real room for open, honest, authentic dialogue. And, and you can't do that too much, right? So even in my own community, we're still working on, on the portrait of the graduate and what we hope to have happened. So I sort of see a broad visioning, like where do we want to be in five or 10 years? And then what do we need to do now to get there? And, and, and what are strengths that we should build on and what are areas for growth that we could do more on? And I think they're real assets in, in both high schools and, and surfacing those and, and And I think they're real assets in, in both high schools and surfacing those and, and, and working through that, I think would be a very good and important process. The CVTE one might need to be separate because part of it is connecting with local businesses and business people and institutions and, and it, it just every one of these buckets is complicated and, and having the business people be involved, I think is going to be really important or industries, right? And and I don't know if they're, if they're game for all of the other high school conversations.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Jane, Don, and then Bonnie. And then I really encourage others to, to weigh in. Go ahead, Jane.
I'm trying to save battery by not having my camera on all the time.
No problem.
Okay, so I have two comments. One is I, I think there, this is a lot to take on in a short period of time and asking already busy people to do more. So I, as usual, I am advocating for slowing down and giving more air and discussion time. The second thing I want to bring up is much as I would like to think this is all about education, for the majority of our community voters, it's about power, regional agreement, it's about finance, the money, and it's about transportation and operational issues. So I would advocate that we take those on first. Because if we, as Mars told us at the first meeting, if we come up against big barriers, there's no point in investing all of the extra time and the other things if we see that we can't solve problems that our communities find significant. And so those are my key concerns because I would love to immerse in an educational conversation and visioning. We don't even know if the high school is going to be funded. So if we spend a lot of time designing our dream high school that we don't get, I would really like to get our, our feet on the ground that we can get a regional agreement that people might find palatable. We can show some financial numbers that are more substantially embedded in facts, not projections, and that our operational issues, especially transportation, can be dealt with to the satisfaction of our communities. Thanks.
So you're, just to clarify, so your three buckets of things you think community members are most interested in sort of upfront were power, money, and transportation.
Right. I do think that they give, there is interest in education, but when I go to town meeting, there's, there are people who obviously their pocketbooks and their voice is number one.
Yeah.
Quite a number of people.
Yeah, I hear you. Pocketbooks are powerful. I think Jake, maybe you should respond why you think it's important to do the educational visioning in parallel with this other work.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I I, I guess what I'll say, I feel like I've said a lot of times in, in the various reports I've written is I think the ability to come together as an A-town entity is going to be driven, in my opinion, through the ed visioning work. It's, it's the opportunity to build something together, to create something together, to create excitement and aspiration that, that I think inspires people to want to be interested in, in supporting it. So I, I don't know. I think it's, it's for me, it's about bringing people together and also about exciting people about the possibilities. I, I don't disagree with people that money's important and it's a key driver, but you know, you're all approving budgets that are well beyond what you need to invest in education. So clearly you care about education. And so the idea of, you know, building a picture of what could be through this joint planning process to me is just a, a critical in just amazing moment for, for your, for your region. I don't have that, feel like I'm being too emotionally soft on this one, but I just, to me, it's, it's going to be the clue for this, for this project.
Don?
So they say if you're a hammer, everything looks like a nail. I, I, I hear where Jake is coming from and I very rarely disagree with him, but I'm going to disagree a little bit now. What is driving this and what has always driven this is money. The people in the towns want to save money. They don't want to beggar their educational system, but they want to save money and we should not lose sight of it. They're smart enough, I think, to know that whatever we put into a, into an agreement that speaks in broad terms about what we'd like to see happen educationally is not something that is in any sense permanent. Excuse me, just one, one sec. It's not permanent. It shouldn't be permanent because education continues to learn and continues to change. And so although I agree with Jake that it should be in there, our present vision. We do it, I think, knowing that once the system is created, then it will be in the hands of the school board and the people in the towns. Transportation, Jane mentions, all our preliminary information is there's no difference in expense. We'll find out for sure in the in-depth study if that preliminary assessment is true. But it's most likely to turn out to be true. The power thing I don't quite understand, the southern towns will have a majority of members on this board, won't they? And more towns, five towns, it's against three. So I don't see the concern there. Delay is not in anybody's interest and I don't think it's what people want. This is an extraordinary complex problem. I am quite overwhelmed with Jake's skill and his team's ability to deal with all these various aspects of this problem. And so I'm completely confident that he ought to proceed on exactly the basis that he's laid before us. I think it sounds like a terrific plan, very well thought out, very sensible, and the direction in which we should go. So I'd probably put in the form of a motion. I know the discussion will continue, but puts it on the table. I would make a motion that we authorize Jake to proceed on the basis that he has set forth before us. Thank you.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Hey, there's been a second. I'm going to open it up for discussion. Peter Taylor, you had your hand up.
I think I was, been online a little longer.
Okay, Bonnie, go ahead.
The mine are pretty simple. One, Jake, when will you forward this deck to us? Because it was really a lot to absorb all at once and it's really good. So when will you forward the entire deck to us that you presented?
Yeah, I can forward it right after the meeting.
It, thank you so much for everything that went in it. The only two things I have is I would agree with a couple of people who said, I think we do have to look at, I would separate out middle school. So I would do elementary, middle and high school because obviously we have different designs and that will have to be resolved. And the other is a request I've brought up many times before, and I think we should look at C, beyond CVT and look at career education. And I would like in whatever.
Thank you, whoever muted. Go ahead, Bonnie.
I would like in whatever way it is dealt with in the subcommittees for all of our students throughout our current districts, new district, that we examine career education with CVTE being an important aspect of it. So that is a request. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Peter?
Sure, lots happened since I put my hand up. Where to start? You know, first, since, since Don put the motion on the floor, I would just concur that I think this is the the right way forward for a couple of reasons. One, I really like how we are going to broaden this circle and bring in teachers and parents, even students and administrators and others to really bring their content expertise, their experience, their vision, their aspirations for what this process can achieve for the broader region. So I really like the broadening of the circle. I, of the buckets, I'm somewhat agnostic on where we fall on those. With the exception that I do think, and I like Bonnie's point about broadening into career education, because I think that is something that we can do better together than we can separately. And it is such an urgent need for the region economically and for our communities and most importantly for our students to be able to explore different career tracks. Some of them might involve college, some of them might involve going directly into the workforce. But to broaden the educational curriculum to include those opportunities, I think is really important. And I think that is a particular area where engaging industry employers as critical partners in that endeavor are really important. I thought it was an interesting exchange between Jake and Don, and I know it wasn't, you know, tit for tat, but I think it's a question of both. I think we need to have a compelling education vision, something that we can build together that's going to enhance education at a time where education has to evolve and investment is needed. And at the same time, I think we can show how by coming together, we are going to reduce the rising costs over time, not necessarily recruit a ton of savings because I'm in the camp that we should be looking for reinvestment rather than return to communities. But I can be convinced on that, but I think we have seen enough data that shows that if we do nothing, that in five and 10 and 15 years, given, given population trends and rising costs, we're not going to be able to maintain the educational quality we have today in, in, in a time where we have to enhance educational quality for our students and our families to get the education that they need and our communities require and our economy require. So I, I think it's, it's both. At the end of the day, this will be a political process and people will bring to the to town meeting a variety of opinions. And I think we need to have a compelling education vision to sell this positively as, as something that is going to be an important long-term investment endeavor for the eight towns.
Thank you, Peter. So are you speaking in favor of the motion?
Yes, I am. I guess I do. And Jake did say, I mean, Jake knows this from the project management team. I, I am a little cautious on the timeline. It seems very aggressive for the body of work that we envision. But Jake did say that, you know, with the December being a target, with the ability to go into 2023 accommodates for some of those, those concerns.
Okay, thank you. So I'm calling for more discussion on the motion that's on the table. I've got George McGurn. Go ahead.
I believe Bonnie was ahead of me, but Lucy, I'd like you to I'd like to request that you reread the motion that is currently on the table, just so that I'm sure I'm talking about the right thing.
Yeah, as I understood it, and Don, correct me if I'm wrong, the motion was to adopt the proposed project plan that Jake presented to us this evening.
Exactly.
Well, that's very simple and very straightforward. And Judge Coburn, you are just consistent and appreciated for that consistency. But I as I said earlier, I, I, I think this is one scenario that is very transparent and very responsible. And I think the way Jake proposes that he spend this money makes sense to me over this period of time. And as I said, I think it's an elegant exit strategy and there are other scenarios. And so we'll see what happens. But I appreciate Judge Coburn's motion.
Thank you, George. I see Jane and Bonnie's hands are up. Anyone who hasn't spoken yet, who would like to speak before? I recognize those who have already spoken. Okay, Bonnie?
Okay. Just quickly, Peter just brought up something that I think maybe Jake, you've already planned for it. One of the things I think we have to look at is in terms of the business, the overall business community and the impact of education. And I hope we have some type, excuse me, of focus group in, in this outreach to get to garner, not just from potential employers, but to garner from, whether it's the nonprofit, from all of the, the larger business community in our eight towns, their views. Because we know that education drives purchase of homes. So is there a place, Jake, in your model where this would, this treatment would be included? Or this discussion would be included?
Yeah, I mean, one, one thing I would say is my experience with ed visioning in two settings so far has been that that work really did bring community members to the table as partners and thinking about what, I guess both of my visioning experiences were at the high school level. But what that high school would reflect in terms of both opportunities for students, but also for the community at large. Addition to that.
I'm, I'm thinking more of like the, you know, Scott Rhodes, the people who had different business associations to make sure we're getting, we're making sure that we're reaching out to them. And is that, is there a place in your plan for that?
Yeah, I don't know that I intentionally wrote that in. I mean, I know I've written community outreach and engagement plans in to target particular community groups, business groups, round tables, things of that sort. With, with, you know, with information or specialized presentations. I mean, I think that certainly is something we could discuss at the.
All right. My question then is, if we pass this motion as Don's motion stands, will we still have the opportunity to look at the points that were brought up? Such as separating education to do the three different divisions, looking at what's driving our timeline, because I do have to say, I think your, your timeline is totally ambitious. And I think we should strive for it, but we do have the factors of the summer, the number of people will be away. I don't want us to compromise on who we bring in because of a timeline. And I hope you would be able to come back to us and say, look, you know, we've, we've got to stretch this out. So I want to make sure that passing this motion still allows for the flexibility, including the point I brought up with. with spreading out CVTE to career education.
Right.
So Bonnie, the the planning board, you know, has the power to vote to move or not move at whatever pace the planning board thinks is appropriate. So voting in favor of this motion does not mean that in two months, three months, four months, a new motion couldn't be brought forward to revise the timeline. Yeah, okay. I'm going to take Jane, and then I'm going to call for a vote because we've got other things on the agenda, including I want to get to public comment. So I hope we can move forward to our next agenda item. Jane?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up what came up in our project management subcommittee regarding how we choose the people that are on these task groups. And we got stymied because nobody really had a formula for how we do that or how big the groups are. And my concern is that we put some effort into making a determination about that because we want people who are fairly neutral, fairly skilled and can commit to time because it's saying parents, teachers, community leaders, et cetera. We need knowledgeable people because these are quite important points. So it, and they're not getting paid. So I just want to point that out as what I see as a weakness of this, that we have not solved that problem in terms of defining task force membership.
Okay. So I don't see any more hands up. I'm going to take a roll call vote on the motion. Starting with Egremont, George McGurn.
Hi.
Tom Berkel.
Hi.
Deb Phillips.
Yes.
Peter Taylor.
Yes.
Steve Bannon.
Yes.
John Silbert. John may have dropped off. Don Coburn.
Yes.
Jane Burke.
Yes.
Kara White.
Yes.
Susan Smith.
Yes.
Colin Smith.
Yes.
Nadine.
Yes.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Marie. Molly.
Yes.
Chuck.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Did I miss anyone? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Community forums, I'm hoping that we can get a motion on engaging a community facilitator for these community convenings tonight so that we can move forward with that and try and get those scheduled for late June as Jake proposed. So I'm opening the floor for a motion to move forward with the engagement of a facilitator for that purpose.
So.
Who made the motion?
George McGurn and someone else.
I did. So I can either second it or make the motion.
George made the motion, Peter seconded. Any further discussion on that? Okay, I'm going to call for roll call vote. Oh, Jane, I'm sorry, your hand is up. Jane? Jane, are you trying to connect with us?
I was going to say, late June is not a desirable time because it's a transition away from school where many people, teachers, families are away because it's a pause between end of school and summer. So if the late June is in the motion, which I didn't hear it being in, but I wanted to make sure it was not in it because I I find that not a good time.
Okay, I don't think it was in. I think that's what Jake was targeting. Jake, you want to speak to why you thought that was an appropriate time period?
Yeah, so I did. We actually did target the last week of June for the, for two sessions. And the reason we did two sessions in one week is we want to make sure that there are conflicts that people have that they're able to make at least one of the two meetings. The obviously, everyone who's involved in schools knows how hectic and chaotic the end of the year is for the schools with graduations and closing up school and all that. And I was trying to be relatively respectful of avoiding those potential conflicts and that that important work that the schools have in front of them. My experience is that there's usually a pretty hardcore set of professional development exercise districts do as soon as they close. So I was trying to kind of steer away from that, which put us in the last week of June. And again, the last thing I'll just say from experience, it's not perfect, Jane, I will, I will completely admit that, is that you got to catch people before July 1. After July 1, it's kind of hands off until probably the second or third week of August. So I was, I thought it was important that we get out to the community, given the decision the board made at the last meeting. We we give folks an opportunity to hear what that decision was, the process, what's involved in that, and then really solicit their input through this facilitated conversation. So that that's really kind of in a real broad sense, the logic that got me to where I ended up situating that meeting. Ben, actually, it's going to be a push for him too, because he, he does a lot of summer training, but he did agree to dates that that week, at least tentatively.
Okay, any more discussion on the motion?
Bonnie? This is exactly what I was concerned about in terms of being driven in terms of time. I think this, the last week in June will be a real turn off to most community members. And if we're looking for greater outreach to the people who haven't heard us, we're not asking school-based people to do anything other than attend. And if you move it to the beginning of June, you still have everybody in town. To me, if I saw a meeting that last week in June, I would be saying they don't really want community input. So I, I, I think that that is not a smart, not a smart move in terms of timing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm really easy on this one, folks. I mean, I, I feel like we need a little bit of planning time to make sure we can get this thing organized. We need some time to make sure it gets marketed and promoted so people know it's available. It's May 9. I think you need, I think you need a month out at least, which puts you the first week in June. I'm not saying that's not possible, Bonnie. I, you know, Ben's game, I don't have any opposition to this, but I do want to make sure from the perspectives of maybe the two superintendents or other folks on the call that that would work.
Jake, I just think I'm deferring to what other people think and more of the people who work in our communities beyond the school districts. I just think it, it, it is that last week is a turn off. I could be wrong. Twenty-three other people on this could disagree with me.
Thanks, Bonnie. Peter, do you have input?
Yeah, just, just a little. I the week of June 6, there's potentially two nights of the Great Barrington Town Meeting. And the week of the 13th, there's two graduations and a school committee that I'm going to, right? So I, I hear the notion around the late in June is not good. It's much better than July or August.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and the maybe the, the 20th is, is Juneteenth celebrated, so it can't be that. That's a a new holiday. Maybe the 21st, 2nd, and 3rd is slightly better than the week of the 27th, but I don't know if that works in Ben's schedule. And Jake is right. We have a lot of really intensive professional development that week with teachers, so they might be engaged from eight to four for five days. And, and it would take a real dynamo to, to do that all day and then turn around and be in a, in a two or three hour facilitated meeting. So I, I don't know if it clarifies, but, but I think earlier in June becomes problematic, particularly because of high school graduations and graduation events. Like if we do it during prom season, then, then we're excluding parents connected to those kids.
Okay, Nadine, and then I hope we can move on to a vote.
I just want to say that I think we do the best job that we can. And I think this is an important enough issue that the community people that want to participate will find a way to participate. And otherwise, they'll communicate with us that this is a problem for them. And I think we just, we need to move forward.
Okay. So seeing no, no more hands up, I'm going to call for a vote on the motion. And this is a motion to approve moving forward with a facilitator for the community convenings, which we hope we can conduct in June. Charles Ketchin.
I'm in favor.
George McGurn. George Steppedow. Tom Berkel.
Yes.
Deb Phillips.
Yes.
Peter Taylor.
Yes.
Steve Bannon.
Yes.
John Silbert. Don Coburn.
Yes.
Jane Burke.
Yes.
Tara.
Yes.
Susan Smith.
Yes.
Colin Smith.
Yes.
Nadine.
Yes.
Bonnie Silvers.
Yes.
Sean Stephen.
Yes.
Molly Thomas.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, thank you for that. Meeting locations, this is an issue that Jane has raised a couple of times. We've been meeting remotely, with the exception of two or three meetings. And Jane has raised the question as to whether it's time to start meeting in person again. And I'd like Jane to speak to the question. And then I'd like, I'd really like to hear from, from everybody else because I know some of us are still looking at the COVID numbers and have particular constraints around that. And so I want to hear from, from everyone who has a point of view on this one way or the other. Go ahead, Jane.
So based on our school committee is back in person and the legislature is back in person, I think that the work that we're doing is so incredibly important. I have no relationship with most of the people whose faces I've seen on the screen. And I think that dilutes the power of what we can do. We can social distance and wear good masks and wash our hands. And obviously, there are some people who may have to be remote. We accommodate that. But I think that from my point of view, this, this way of working is counterproductive. And I would very much appreciate at least an occasional meeting where we're together, even if we're outside. And also, I feel we should go to each other's communities to meet. And so we can get to see a little bit more than just the Berkshire Hills Conference Center. Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, I disagree respectfully with Jane. First of all, if we start to meet in person totally, I know my attendance will go down. It's just, this is much easier to do. I don't think it affects the discussion that we have. And I think COVID numbers where they are right now, it's not a good idea to be meeting in person. And if we start to travel around South County, it's another hour, hour and a half of traveling. And I think this is just the way to go to get the most people. We have almost all of our representatives here, and there's a reason for that. This is the right format.
Thanks, Steve. Colin?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Steve. I feel like this is a convenient way for us to meet. It certainly is for me, and I am not limiting the, the, what I say and participate in the meetings is not changed by the format that I'm, I'm participating in the way I'm participating. So I think this remote type of format gets more of us there. And as, as far as COVID is concerned, I'm very sensitive to that. So I, I just it, it goes up and down and there is no rhyme or reason to it. You know, right now, it's pretty, pretty rampant, especially in the schools. And so it feels like it that way anyway. So I'd, I'd like, I'd like to stay this format.
Okay, Nadine?
I totally agree with what Colin just said. And I do think that, you know, while I think there's some value to coming back together in person, if we're all wearing masks, I think we still have the same limitation with the personal connection. We can't really see each other's faces. I feel that this format has worked really well to get us really good attendance. And I have seen this working in other committees that I'm serving on. And Zoom groups are almost 100% in attendance in all that I'm participating in, which I think says a lot for a group our size.
Thanks, George.
Thank you, Lucy. Well, I agree with Steve and Colin and Nadine. And I don't think it's a contradiction that I also regret what we are missing because we don't have the interactions that we are accustomed to. And, you know, our students are trying to deal with this, our teachers are trying to deal with this. Our planning board is trying to deal with this. It, it's not, it's not ideal, but it's something I think should be continued. But the more face-to-face interaction, and, you know, I'm talking about somebody that is well-known for being what, you know, you name it, I check the list.
You know, compromised.
Yeah, right, whatever it is, you know. And all I do is lament the late spring, you know.
Okay, thanks, George. Bonnie?
I, I would support the, my colleagues who have just spoken. I do agree with Jane that we missed something. The casual conversation you have before the meeting begins, interactions afterwards. But we are one of the 79 Interactions afterwards, but we are one of the seventy-nine, as of yesterday. Highest transmission communities in the United States. We have people on our team here who are parents. And we have people who are juggling many other meetings and commitments. And as I think it was Colin said, or Steve, to get this number of people here on a regular basis. I do not think we should, should change it. And rotating meetings around, let's see how many other things we can put in the way. Um, Jane, I'm sorry, this is a case where. If it's only broken slightly, leave it alone. It's working. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. All right, um, I think we can move forward. I just want to say again how much I appreciate uh, the attendance we've had. It really has been extraordinary for a group of this size. Um, and I do think the, the remote attendance helps with that. So I'm thankful for Zoom for allowing us to meet in this big group. As frequently as we do and with the attendance that we do. Um, you, you all probably don't know, but you would if we met in person. That I have a hearing impairment. And so when people are masked, I really can't hear them. So meeting in person with masks would be uh, very difficult for me to chair the meeting. Um, so I appreciate that we're continuing, or we will continue for the near future to. Uh, meet by Zoom and then when we can get together without masks. And we can't really socially distance in the, in the Berkshire Hills room with thirty-three people. Uh, when we can get together without masks uh, and in tighter quarters. I really do look forward to that day because I do agree with Jane uh, and others. That it's wonderful to meet in person and, and you do develop relationships that are hard to develop over Zoom. So I do look forward to that day. I'm gonna call for any subcommittee reports next. Um, community outreach is meeting on Friday. Um, we don't have a report to give you tonight, but we will be meeting on Friday. Educational quality.
Um, nothing to report. We haven't met. We're waiting for a report from Hanover at the end of June and we'll reconvene when we get that.
Okay, finance.
Roger.
Oh, that Rogers night here. Um, I don't think finance has met since.
We have, we have not met, Lucy.
Since, since March twenty-second. Okay, operations.
Uh, we have not met. We are thinking.
Okay, and project management, we did meet last week. We did some brainstorming around the plan that Jake. Uh, presented tonight. He made adjustments based on that, uh, which I think were good ones. And really appreciate the input of project management. Anything more, Peter, to report on the project management subcommittee side?
No.
Okay. Um, so we're at seven twenty-four and we have time for public comment. So I'm looking at the participants and I see Sharon Gregory's hand is up. So Mary, can you promote Sharon?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, I'd just like to tie um, CVTE uh, programs with. Uh, finances that were discussed today. Um, and Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But last year, Great Barrington um, uh, proposed a sixty thousand dollar expenditure. For sending two students to CVTE school. This year, I believe there is a, there are ten um, with a proposed budget of a hu-. Two hundred and twen- fifty thousand, I think. I don't know if that's official or not, but the numbers are getting larger. I tried to see what Southern Berkshires um, you know, has in their budget or proposed numbers. But the point is that while we have some interesting CVTE informal or registered programs. It costs money and we can't say no to the students. You know, we can opine all we want about whether or not they actually graduate from a career and so forth. But they, they need an education that we can't provide now. And I hate for them to have to travel all there, all, all the way up north because we also have to pay for that. We, we have budgeted it. So I would appreciate the board taking that into consideration. There's a direct correlation of what we don't have to the budget.
Sharon, just to correct the numbers, I believe this year's Great Barrington has four students going and it's upwards of two hundred thousand dollars. You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify for, for those on the board who may not know this. That those costs are paid by the individual towns as opposed to the district. So one town can get hit in a very significant way uh, in a single year over a span of years. And it's not sort of spread over the district as are some other costs.
And Lucy, just to add additionally, it's the cost of tuition to an approved program. But, but almost as much as the cost of transportation to that approved program. And in the past, we had a student go to Smith Vocational and the transportation was actually more than the tuition. Um, and if we send a student to McCann, uh, the transportation can end up being more than the tuition.
Uh, George, you have your hand up? It's down now? Okay, um, any other?
I am muted. Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Now unmuted, excuse me. Uh, I want to follow up on what Peter Dillon said. Um, uh, we, we have one student um, that uh, could have gone to uh, Northampton. At, at a rather extravagant price. Uh, and chose to go uh, to Connecticut uh, at uh. Uh, with an arrangement that uh, our community uh, thought was exceptional and wonderful. Uh, and I, I actually uh, that agricultural activity is uh, not now. Uh, dealing with the greenagers with some future potential things for local students. Uh, but uh. What Peter said is really very important to consider in the long run. Uh, oh, about how these very specific issues with the very specific student. Clear paths have to be addressed.
Okay, I don't see any, thank you, George. I don't see any more hands up, so I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
John.
Second.
Steve seconded. Okay, Charlie? Charlie?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, George?
Yes.
Tom Berkel?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter Taylor?
Yes.
Steve Bannon?
Yes.
Don Coburn?
Yes.
Uh, Jane?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Bonnie Silver?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Uh, Molly?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, everyone, very much. Thanks for your patience.
Everybody, good night.